Councilor Keenan here, just wanted to make sure you can hear me okay?
You're coming through clear, Councilor Keenan, thank you.
Hi, good morning, it's Councilor Santos checking in.
You're coming through clear, Councilor Santos, thank you.
Okay, members of council, welcome back to our budget proceedings. Today, we are hoping to get into legislative services and the office of the CEO. I would note, though, that Councilor Power has a motion that he would like to put forward that I thought we could deal with first since the Library Board representative is here in case there are questions for Todd Kyle or the questions for Council Power. As I said at the beginning, this approach to budget is flexible to meet the needs of council, to make sure that we really treat this budget as a team approach. And when a councilor has an idea of how to strengthen the budget, a unique idea, we want to welcome that into the process. And on that note, Councilor Power has asked for time today, so we'll start with his motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Chincoosie Library has been something that's been in the city of Brampton for as long as I can remember. My first introduction into, or into, the world of politics was actually at the Civic Center, and when we do class trips from Hilldale Public School and met with Ken Willens. And the loss of the library was a significant blow to Ward 7 and the community. And, you know, it's talked about consistently, it's talked about readily, the services that in Ward 7 that were lost, the free services, the DJing program, the markets, the pop-ups, not just the books, but what it represented to the community. And I really thought that we needed to work on it. And I know there's been a few, a few locations scouted and a few locations put out there, but none of them are viable and none of them are quick, or none of them are something that can be happening anytime soon. So, you know, I worked with council colleagues and come up with an idea, and I think that, I think the clerks put the motion on the screen, but, and I think we've got something that can work for everybody. So, with that, the motion is on the screen. Whereas the city of Brampton provides a wide range of essential services that are critical to our quality of life, community hubs are versatile, future-proofed public centers that embody a walk-to, walk-to, one-stop-shop policy, bringing together health, social, culture, recreational, and other resources in one location to meet the diverse needs of the community. The key to supporting existing and future growth requires significant investment to locate facilities and services such as libraries, arts, innovation, and childcare. Whereas Brampton creates parks and recreation hubs with flexible spaces to share, shared between recreation and the public library, allowing for multiple activities that serve age groups and interests throughout the year. Therefore, be it resolved, council directs staff to revisit the design and plan in the Howden Recreation Center. The aim is to incorporate a corporate community hub, or sorry, a community hub model focusing on the integration of a 30,000-square-foot Chincoosie Library into the design. The redesign process should ensure that it's become cost-effective and efficient. And I think that's probably the biggest thing when I, when I talk about this, is that we don't have to pay for land, we don't have to pay for space, it's already there. So now it becomes efficient, and more so, the timeline drastically changes. It's no longer a five- to eight-year window, it now drastically changes to become two-year window till we get shovels in the ground. So with that, that's the motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilor Vesante would like to speak to this. And thank you, Councilor Vesante, once again, for being one of our representatives on the Library Board and taking a keen interest in finding a solution.
And thank you very much, Mayor, and as well as Councilor Barr, who together with I, we work with the Library Board and we work with library staff. On behalf of myself and Councilor Barr, I'd like to thank Councilor Power for bringing this forward. It's out-of-the-box thinking, as you might say, and it does, as the councilor mentioned, super-accelerate our plans for bringing back a new Chincoosie branch. I know that Todd, the CEO of the library, is here, and I wonder if Todd, you might be able to come forward just to speak how this can and will align with the library's facility master plan, which is what governs the library's thinking about all of its locations now and going forward. Please, Todd.
Thank you, councilor, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, as, as the councilor just mentioned, the library does have a facilities master plan that envisions growth over the next 10 years. There was an addendum done in the last year and a half, partly due to the changes at the Chincoosie Library. And its recommendation was that, that it was essential that there continue to be a sort of district-level library in that neighborhood of at least 30,000 square feet. So certainly, I can confirm that the suggestion that's on the table is consistent with what the library's, Library Board's desires are. I would add that when, when the examination of potential sites was done, connected to that, and some of that was done in closed session, the Howden Community Center was not considered because of what the message was in terms of where it was in its, in its development. In other words, it was not available. That doesn't mean, again, that in terms of the Library Board's desires and the requirements for a new site, that it certainly isn't within the appropriate geographical area with the appropriate accessibility and integration into its neighborhood.
Yeah, thank you, Todd, and, and I think that that's important. And through the conversations that Councilor Barr and I have had with Councilor Power and together with members of the Library Board and yourself, we're very grateful for this way forward for us and look forward to seeing staff work on this and expedite this for the benefit of the residents of the east end of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Vesante. And just to say, I know Councilor Plessy and Deputy Mayor Singer involved in Councilor Barr in finding a solution, grateful for how hands-on you were. One of the reasons I have agreed to second this is I think this is a great solution to co-locate recreation and a library. We all have kids with different interests, and I tell you, I could, when we go to the library, my daughter Savannah would want to be there all day and loves everybody in the library, but my son Theo would probably not last as long. And if there was a recreation center next to it, it just, it allows multiple interests to, and families to be able to take the whole family. I think it's a, it's a great concept, is what we're doing at Embleton. I also think if we looked at the immediate solutions before us, the other one presented was to rent from a large was to rent from a large private-sector corporation. And I'm a big believer in public assets and public ownership, and if you look at a real estate asset, it goes up in value. What we're building here is going to go up in value. Look at what we built 10 years ago, or 20 years ago, 30 years ago, it looks like a great investment for the city. If we're paying significant rent to a private corporation, they're benefiting from our rental, not the public. And so I expressed that sentiment to Counselor Power and Basante when this was first raised. I just think this is a great solution. So looking forward to seeing this motion put forward. And I know we've got a number of councillors that want to speak to it. I've got Counselor Santos on the board, followed by Counselor Mederos, Power, and Barr. And now we have Counselor Keenan on the board, too.
Thank you so much through you, Mr. Mayor. As Chair of Community Services, I was briefed on this possible idea and motion yesterday, I believe it was, and I'm very pleased to support it. I'm also pleased that actually it's the blessing in disguise, kind of, because last year's budget, Counselor Plessy delayed actually the budgeting for Howden. And because of that delay, we are able to rethink what Howden is going to be and integrate the library into the design of this future space. And it's also consistent with the work that we did in the previous term as it relates to community hubs and taking a look at a sort of a broader view and more efficient view of how we use our community spaces. So as Chair of Community Services, wholeheartedly support this, and I would be happy, once it's passed, to also push and make sure that it is done accordingly. The only thing I'll add is that the Howden Recreation Center and area, while it's not as serviced in terms of transit as the Chincoosie Library branch was, what's great about this location is that there's actually an active transportation route directly adjacent to where this library and recreation center is going to be. So the fact that young people can find alternative ways to actually get there, especially when transit is not accessible, and adds to the fact that it's even more of a community safety zone, is fantastic. So thank you, Counselor Power, Mayor Brown, and everyone for bringing this idea forward. Fully support it.
Next up on the list is Counselor Mederos.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, from, I know from Susan Fennell complex, the integration of library with recreation, you know, Mayor Brown, I thought you were going to mention, well, you know, I remember taking my son to Susan Fennell, and he would do his swimming lessons and I would go in the library. So I always thought that was such a creative way to integrate, and I think it's going to be great for the community. I guess the only question I have is regarding timelines. Now, with the integration of library, when are we going, because we've been dealing with Howden for like, I don't know how many years. And so it's been 70 years. I know there's always been great passion in starting on this, doing this, for whatever reason we're here today, and finally, it seems like a plan going forward. Can staff maybe touch upon what dates we're talking about, like timelines, is it too early?
Through the chair, Counselor Mederos. After today's decision, staff will immediately begin working on the redesign efforts. I would see the redesign taking the current year, 2025, going into 2026 as well, but with, we would anticipate being able to tender and start construction in the 2026 construction year, provided that funding is made available.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mederos. Counselor Power.
I'd just like to add a couple of notes. I know there was a question of accessibility yesterday when I was talking to the Library Board. Accessibility was a key question, and Counselor Santos just brought that up. There's actually three bus routes that service that area, so the Route 9, 17, and 19. So the accessibility piece is still there, so we're okay in that sense. And I'd also like to thank Commissioner Boyes and Commissioner Pilateris for their work on this. They put a lot of work into this yesterday, so thank you very much, guys.
Okay, Counselor Abrah.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor, and I just really wanted to say thank you to Rod Power and Mayor Brown for really bringing this coming together to life. And when you really look at this budget, you have two libraries in the budget, which is on the east and the west. And I think it's a great thing for the Library Board. And I know Counselors Basante and I are very, very excited and very happy to support this. Thank you again, Counselor Power.
Deputy Mayor Singh.
Yeah, thank you. And I know how much the Chincoosie branch meant to the community. It was, it was an institution, and to replace that will be no small feat. But I think this makes sense. Todd, I want you to have the confidence that, you know, I think library first and the community fits around it, the community center aspect, but I think what you're going to hear from council, we want something that the community is proud of at Howden. So thank you for your leadership on this and also, you know, recognizing budget constraints. You know, this is a good way to make sure we get what we want within the budgets we have. And, you know, we got a lot of stuff in our awards. There's some stuff that we weren't able to do this year and will do next year, and it's just about working together. So I'm happy to support my colleague. I think the Chincoosie branch is definitely missed, and I think when the community sees that there's something coming down the pipeline with money behind it as well, it'll give them the confidence as well. So thank you.
Counselor Basante back on the board. Oh, sorry, and I apologize, Counselor Keenan was also before you. So Counselor Keenan, then Counselor Basante.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Very supportive of this initiative. It's definitely something that's missed and well-needed. So kudos to Counselor Power for thinking outside the box to bring something like this to the community. Given the fact that it is budget, I will ask some budget questions. I don't see a dollar value assigned to the redesign, but I do know that we were at, we were looking to top up an additional $9 million. And I do know that we were all ready to go out to tender for this facility. So is there, is the funding, is that $9 million now going to be put aside to start this redesign process?
I think that question would be better put to our CEO.
Through the mayor to Counselor Keenan, my understanding is that the $9 million is no longer required because we have sufficient funds currently budgeted that we can use to pivot and move into a new design.
But I think it's safe to say that $9 million will be needed next year and likely more to achieve having recreation and library in the same, in the same venue.
A good point, Mayor Brown. As soon as the design is done, it'll be costed, and we'll bring it back to, through Budget Committee for a budget amendment.
Thank you, thank you for that. So we are leaving the $9 million out of this current budget?
My understanding is no.
Okay, great, those are my questions, and thanks again to Counselor Power for doing this for the community. That's all, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, what I think we should do is, I think we should leave this with our Chief Budget Officer to do a little bit of homework before we conclude the budget. Knowing that it's going to be needed down the road, maybe we don't remove it from the budget. I also know there's a bit of a calculation that's required on library development charges and rec development charges. We have obviously more rec development charges than we do library development charges, so they need to do a bit of math on all this, but we'll find a way to make it work. But if you could just give Nash and Mark a little bit of time to figure out the financial formula. And Marlon, you wanted to add something?
Mayor Brown was just going to add that my understanding is, the $9 million is just being requested right now, it's not actually been approved yet.
Okay.
Just for clarification.
So I think the finance team will tell us what is needed to achieve what Counselor Power has put forward, but I think we all know this is going to cost more than was originally planned because you now have two uses, so prudent to set aside what is needed.
That's great, thank you. And just last, hopefully, myself and Counselor Basante, as Chair and Vice Chair, can work with the Commissioner and the team to speed up this process. A year to do a redesign, and we'll try to get it done in eight months, so let's set some real goals here. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
I like speed to get any shovels in the ground. Okay, Counselor Basante.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you, members of council, staff, for coming up and supporting this. I know that I'm reading Todd's mind right now when I say the following in that, again to Counselor Keenan's point, asking staff work closely with the library and with the Library Board as you complete that design, to make sure that we have a truly inspiring building for generations to come. And again, very supportive of all of this, very pleased to see this come together, and ask that we have a recorded vote. Thank you.
Okay, there's no other speakers. We have the motion before us, recorded vote requested. I know we have a number of other budget motions, there's no particular order, you can save them for next week, but this is the first one, and because Counselor Power wanted to do it today, that's why we're doing this one now. I just had a few people ask me about that. Okay.
Through you, Mayor Brown, recorded vote on the library motion. Would all members in favor please rise? And Counselor Santos, how do you vote?
Absolutely.
Counselor Keenan, how do you vote?
Absolutely.
And that is unanimous in favor.
Okay. Hey, Todd, I bet you didn't think you'd get a location that quick. Okay, so now we're going to get back into our departmental presentations, and first up today, we have Legislative Services.
Good morning, Mayor Brown, members of council and staff. I'm pleased to present the 2025 proposed budget for Legislative Services. Could I have the next slide, please? Before I begin, I want to express my gratitude to the leaders and their teams for their contributions in preparing this budget and for what they do every day in supporting our internal departments and our residents. I also wish to acknowledge staff's ongoing efforts in identifying and implementing operational efficiencies and their commitment to providing high-quality services that help build our communities. These teams deliver expert and professional services across a diverse range of areas, including community safety, prosecutions and court operations, legislative compliance, risk management, city governance, and records management. Our recent restructure transferred animal services to community services. However, I'm happy to address any questions regarding the animal services budget. In addition to their support functions, this year, we have been responsible for various initiatives, including the residential rental license program, the ward boundary review, the enterprise risk management project, and of course, the opening of the Automated Enforcement Processing Center. Next slide, please. In identifying priorities for our 2025 budget, the department focused on these four specific goals that you see on this slide. Our intent is to build on 2024's achievements and continue having an impact on community safety, working with the public, and being fiscally responsible through working efficiently and effectively. To briefly highlight, community safety and service efficiency benefited in 2024 from launching the Automated Speed Enforcement Initiative and the significant investment in bylaw and enforcement. Regarding bylaw, 27 of the 28 recommendations from the bylaw operations review have been implemented, which operationally will see three significant enhancements. The first is a more proactive enforcement through increased neighborhood blitzes, for example. The second is a new loop enforcement model, which will see the highest parking complaint areas attended to twice a day. And the third one is an increase in part-time enforcement coverage from an overnight-only schedule to 24/7. For the ASE initiative, 100 automated speed enforcement cameras were installed in 2024, and the final 85 will be installed in 2025. This is the largest and most ambitious launch in all of Canada. We have issued 37,000 tickets since opening in September, and I'm happy to also report that we have been in discussions with several municipalities interested in contracting with us for their speed camera programs. Together with other traffic calming initiatives, these cameras are a vital tool in changing behavior and creating safer streets. And when you hear of tickets like the one at Main Street South in downtown Brampton, where a vehicle was traveling 126 kilometers an hour over the posted speed limit, the need for this program is pretty clear. Regarding public engagement, our animal services team must be commended for their outreach efforts. They held several public information sessions regarding coyote awareness. They participated in events to promote animal welfare and adoption. I'm especially proud of their work in hosting staff from First Albany Persnations to teach them the skills they need to take back to their community so they can open their own animal services. And of course, a huge congratulations to them as this year's recipient of the Animal Welfare Innovation Award. And finally, our risk management program was launched this year, and while it's still in development, it has already been extremely beneficial in identifying risks and evaluating the measures that mitigate and manage those risks. Could I have the next slide, please? Thank you. When we consider budget drivers, Legislative Services is also impacted by provincial legislation and local needs. Our goal in the 2025 budget is to ensure we are positioned to meet these demands and continue serving our internal clients and our community. The next slide will highlight some of the 2025 initiatives that will build on the foundations we laid in 2024. So if we could move to the next slide. There's a lot of information on this slide, so to summarize, our focus is to translate the budget investments into community action. To ensure continued proactive engagement and timely response, more operations staff were added in bylaw and animal services and at the processing center. 2025 is the second year of the RRL pilot program to continue addressing rental units in the pilot wards. This spring, staff will be reporting on the outcomes of the first year of the program, and the public engagement regarding expanding the pilot has already started. The clerks team reports an increase in demand for Silver Mary ceremonies and intend on expanding availability to five days a week. As well, there is a steady increase in business and lottery license applications. Next slide, please. The Legislative Services operating budget is $79.6 million with the funding breakdown shown on this slide. 18% of our budget is tax-funded, 82% is funded from user fees and service charges. The department's base operating growth includes the staffing increases to support ASE and bylaw stabilization. So to note, 57 of the 62 new positions represent staffing requests that were approved in year in 2024 to support these two divisions. It's important to also note that these additions are offset by revenue increases and adjustments leading to a total net expenditure change of $1.439 million. Next slide, please. In 2025, to meet our goals of continued community safety and engagement, we propose the capital investment shown on this slide. The animal services capital budget represents investments to the division's assets to support annual needs. Minor capital for enforcement encompasses small expenditures to address both planned and unexpected operational needs. The $225,000 allocation to enforcement to fund the RRL pilot program in the current pilot wards runs till the end of the year. This amount doesn't consider any expansion of the program. And with the municipal election in 2026, now is the time to budget for the costs and the logistics of our election. So next slide, please. The 2025 capital budget for Legislative Services is just over $1 million with a significant allocation of over $800,000 to procure the necessary technology and equipment for the upcoming municipal election. The capital budget is 100% tax-funded. The next slide. With that, thank you for the opportunity to present this budget and our goals for 2025. Together with my team, we're happy to address any questions.
Okay. Counselor Plessy, you're always my first question. You're not on the board yet. What's happening? Okay. Thank you, then, for the presentation. I'm sure we'll have more questions as we dig further into this budget.
Very good, thank you very much.
Counselor, sorry, point of order, Mayor Brown, it's Counselor Santos.
Oh, sure. Okay, and I see Counselor Keenan, too.
Almost.
Counselor Santos.
Thanks so much through you, Mr. Mayor. I have no questions because I've been briefed on the budget already. I just really wanted to comment and thank Legislative Services team as Chair of Legislative Services. I know that we've done a tremendous, tremendous amount of work, particularly bylaw enforcement. And I just want to emphasize that in Budget Chat 2025 for Wards 1 and 5, Michael Halls didn't necessarily open up the big massive 700-page binder, but we did get a lot of bylaw enforcement questions. So I just want to say thank you to Laura and Rod Pigs and the bylaw enforcement team for really standing up and making sure that we improve the services in bylaw enforcement. And I'm confident that this year with the budget, with the new officers coming into play, new standard operating procedures, we're going to see a lot of changes. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just gonna, I was just gonna, Counselor Santos, cover what I was going to say as well. So, good, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you then for the presentation.
Thank you both.
Next up is the Office of the CEO. Marlon.
Good morning. Sorry, got that on. Good morning, Mayor, Member of Council. I'm pleased to be presenting the 2025 proposed budget for the Office of the CEO. But before I start, I just want to thank my staff for all the work they've done in this past year, and especially in putting together our 2025 budget. And of course, the mayor's budget team for all the work they've done so far in moving, moving this budget along. And next slide. The Office of the CEO is made up of six divisions, including business improvement and compliance, economic development, strategic services and initiatives, purchasing, internal audit, and, most recently, municipal transition and integration. Next slide, please. The budget goals for the department are overseeing and progressing key corporate projects stimulating economic growth and prosperity. For example, in 2024, there was over 3,700 jobs created through our rec dev initiatives and, and work. Supporting business attraction and retention. In 2024, we had over 100,000 businesses. In 2023, 104,000 businesses. In 2024, we're up to 111,000. Fostering and maintaining strong relationships with all level of, all levels of government. Continuing to explore alternative funding options. In 2024, in just new grants given to the city or secured by the city was over $34 million. Creating positive youth employment and mentorship opportunities. Continuing to find new opportunities for operational efficiencies and cost reductions. And reducing our capital backlog, which was substantial in 2024, we're able to reduce that by about 54%. Next slide, please. Some of our, our budget drivers is maintaining sound financial management and stability, maintaining effective and efficient delivery of services, managing rapid population growth, managing provincial and federal legislative changes, addressing Brampton's plan, strategies, and mayor and council priorities, and continuing to maintain our, our service levels. Next slide, please. Our operating budget highlights, in 2025, we're going to be advancing our mayor and council and city initiatives and priorities. Support for businesses in Brampton. Enhance intergovernmental advocacy efforts. Continuing to create youth employment opportunities. We've, we've upped our, our opportunities from 150 in 2024 to over 200 in 2025. Implement internal audit management action plans. We've got over roughly about 210 management action plans that we're planning on, on making sure that we close off. And implement our new procurement bylaw. Next slide, please. In 2025, our department expenditures is estimated to be 21.7 million, which is going to be offset by 2 million in revenues for a net operating budget of 19.4 million. This budget includes just one new staff in request for a corporate project division. And of that 19 million, roughly about 15 million of it is allocated to basically labor expenditures. Next slide, please. Our capital budget highlights, drive economic growth, there's about $1 million in there for our, our Brampton Venture Zone. Position Brampton as cybersecurity, cybersecurity leader. Promote awareness of key, key corporate projects. Continuing to advocate for long-term care. And next slide. Capital budget overview is roughly about $11 million in capital. It's an increase from $9.2 million. And that's it.
Okay, questions for Marlon? Okay, I don't see questions. But Marlon, you keep up the great work. And obviously, the fact there's no questions is because you keep us up to date on what you're, what you're working on.
Thank you, Mayor Brown.
We have some motions now. And we got budget time set aside next week. But I was going to say, we can deal with motions that are ready today. Ones that are not ready today, we can do next week. I also know on Monday, we were wanting to get into the stormwater charge increase, staff report, the community office, community outreach, support report. But I believe Counselor Plessy has a motion that he wanted to raise today. And I would just say, it is helpful for us planning-wise. We have this 30-day window for the budget. When you put forward your motions now, and the finance team has to rejig things when we have that final document, there'll, there'll need to be supporting motions showing where it comes from. So it is helpful to us for motions that change the financial formula to have that in advance, so that we don't cause Mark and Nash to gain additional gray hair. Over to Counselor Plessy. And on that note, thank you for having your motion ready today.
Ready to go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have a big problem in Heart Lake. There are so many people that want to use the ice rink, the outdoor ice rink. It's a good problem to have. But it's taking its toll in the community. Everybody's really trying to work together, extremely supportive, but this tiny little ice pad, there was one night where me and, me and my family went over, and we counted 33 people on this tiny little ice pad. So, a good problem to have. But Counselor Brown, myself, you know, we take the calls, and, and we want to, we really want to do something about it. And untouched for a long time, in the area of, in, in the heart of Heart Lake is, is Sandalwood and Conestoga, Sandalwood Park. Hopefully, hopefully soon to be renamed after the, the scouts who are in there all the time cleaning it up. But that's something in the, in the future. But I, so we wanted to put this motion on the floor. There, there's no budget impact as of right now. So, but we do want to at least start working on it. So, read it up. Whereas residents have requested enhanced community facilities for recreation, social gathering throughout the city of Brampton, particularly in Ward 2. Whereas residents, especially those from the Heart Lake community, have expressed concern to their local councillors regarding the lack of sufficient investment in community amenities and facilities in Ward 2. Whereas there is an overwhelming support from residents, particularly in the Heart Lake community, for the addition of hockey and pleasure skating rinks, recognizing the importance of these spaces in fostering community connections and recreational engagement, therefore be resolved. Staff be directed to work with the ward councillors and mayor to design the scope of future outdoor amenities, as well as the revitalization of existing amenities, including but not limited to an outdoor hockey rink and dedicated pleasure skating area at Sandalwood Park in Ward 2. The proposed design improvements at Sandalwood Park include conversion of existing soccer field to an artificial turf field, installation of a running track, development of a full-sized hockey rink, including all necessary facilities for operation and maintenance, and the creation of a large area dedicated to pleasure skating. Staff be directed to release a procurement document by June 1st, 2025, for the design and construction of the proposed new amenities and the revitalization of existing amenities at Sandalwood Park. Staff be directed to report back to council outlining additional funding required for the design and construction of future outdoor amenities, including but not limited to an outdoor hockey rink and pleasure skating area at Sandalwood Park to be ready for the 2025-2026 winter season. A portion of the 1.2 and a half, two and quarter in the million in the 2025 capital budget, including but not limited to the 625,000, be allocated for the design, development, and revitalization of the amenities at Sandalwood Park.
That's the motion. Thank you, Counselor Plessy, for the work you've put into this. And just to say, I've been tagged in many of the Facebook discussion groups about Boreham Park, and it is obviously one of the most popular rinks. It has caused community friction because everyone wants to use it. But that's a good problem to have. We want kids to be outdoors in, in the winter, to stay healthy and active. Canada is plagued by rising rates of childhood obesity. And of course, part of that is diet, but part of that is lifestyle, where kids now watch TV more than ever, have video games that are addicted more than ever. And if we have tools to combat that, I think that is wonderful for our city. And I think this would be an amenity that would be very well used. And so I'd love to see the design and the cost. And then council, obviously, that will come back to, to, to council. But just picturing what this could be, mixing both pleasure skating and hockey is a concept that works very well in the city of Toronto, if you see their joint facilities. And just look at Gage Park. I love driving by Gage Park and seeing how busy it is. That skating trail is, our community loves it. And I think Wards 2 and 6 would, would love something similar. So happy to support this. And thank you, Counselor Plessy, for the work that you've put into this. We have Deputy Mayor Singh and Counselor Brown wishing to speak to this as well.
Thank you. And just looking at where Sandalwood Park is located, I just want to be on record for Ward 9 and 10, because my residents will enjoy this amenity as well, being in close proximity. So more than happy to support. Also, vice versa, next year, we'll have a motion coming for Soccer Center extension, which I know your residents will enjoy.
Yeah, absolutely, for sure.
So, you know, all in the spirit of collaboration, we're more than happy to support, myself and Counselor Tor. And I know many of our residents, especially along Dixie and Bremley, which is close proximity, will definitely enjoy this amenity. So we will be supporting. Thank you so much.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. And just want to say thank you, Counselor Plessy. And thank you for all the hard work, especially the community has put into this advocating. There's a lot of young families are coming into this area. And as families change, needs change. And I think when we look at recreation centers, they're full. And that's a good thing. And, and having outdoor amenities is very, very important for our communities. Again, so thank you so much again. Just wanted to comment on that. And I'm looking forward to that project.
Counselor Santos.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, as Chair of Community Services, Plessy gave me the heads up about this and obviously fully support. I just wish I had as much space in Ward 1 and 5 to do something similar. The tiny little ice rink in Dugan Park, as well as the one in Major William Sharp Park, is also very much so used. But I guess the location of this massive project isn't too, too far. At the same time, this, I guess, does not prohibit us from looking at similar amenities in, in other wards, like Wards 1 and 5, should we find the space, that adequate space for it. So I supported as Chair of Community Services and look forward to the project progressing.
Thank you, Counselor Santos. I'd just say, one of the great things about having a young council with so many kids on this council, is that, you know, you look at Counselor Plessy, you see with Weston how much she loves hockey and uses these outdoor amenities. You know, Counselor Keenan, his daughter Tenley, hockey, buddy hockey superstar. And so, and obviously, Counselor Santos, Lennon, I know loving the, the Dugan Park facility. I think by having so many kids, that we see how families enjoy these recreational amenities. It, it's, you know, at one point, they said Brampton Council was much older, pre, pre 2014. I think it was, there's a lot of young kids that, that, and Counselor Tor, you have the youngest. But I think it does give that real-life exposure to how recreational amenities can make such a difference for, for families. We have Counselor Plessy's motion on the floor. All those in favor? I happen to second that. A motion carries. Are there other motions prepared today? Otherwise, we can deal with those motions on Monday.
Monday, Monday.
Monday, okay. So we'll adjourn the Budget Committee then until Monday? We'll continue on Monday? And thank you, councilors, for your work. And this gives some additional work for Nash and Mark to embark upon on the weekend to make sure these two new motions fit into our budget. Thank you so much.